All right, call the meeting to order for the December 4th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting at 6:04 PM. My name is Stephanie Slush. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. To my right, I have Jimmy Tarr. He's alternate Chair. The far end, I have Doug Finn. To my left, I have John Jeffress. I have our Assistant Town Planner, Ella Jaeger, and I have our new Town Administrator, Andrew Levine, who's joining us tonight. Thank you for coming. As always, the first item on our agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for our audience to come forward with anything, bring anything to the attention of the Planning Board that's not a part of the agenda. And with that, it doesn't look like there is anyone here to come forward.
Onliners.
We don't have it online tonight, I don't think, do we?
Live streaming, okay.
All right, with that, we will close public forum and move to the approval of our minutes of our November 6th meeting. Thank you to Lori for the very thorough notes. Have folks been had a chance to review them, or do you want to take a minute to?
Like a minute, for sure.
Want a minute?
Relatively dense.
I have no problem with the minutes. I would encourage brevity.
Is this the transcription of the entire?
That's what it feels like, yeah. I wouldn't, there's a number of reasons why you want to encourage brevity. Not the least of which is liability. If somebody can pick some detail out of this later on, you know, and use it against the town.
Do you want to defer approving?
No, I have no problem with the minutes as they are right now.
Yeah, they are just in depth.
They're very deep.
And detailed.
Very detailed.
Yeah, I had a chance to read them, and they were very detailed. Anyone?
Being referred to as Jeff in a couple of instances, but that's just syntax, I believe. Or is she talking about somebody else?
For what part?
There was no Jeff present.
ADU bylaw update. Next to last page.
Yep, so that should be.
Bullet points, points 3, 5. But that's all that jumps up. This is all like everything we got, you know, including the Cliff Notes on the copy.
Jeff would like Doug to send to board.
The update, the ADU thing?
Yeah, do we assume that they're referring to John?
Yes, that's what he said.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
That's what was noticed.
Okay.
Yep, any reference to Jeff should be John.
Fair enough.
Other than that.
Move to approve? Everybody had time? Move to approve with those edits.
With, with the modifications as noted. Was that a motion?
My move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting minutes, November 6th, 2024 are approved with notation that all Jeffs should be John.
Lee did say he's coming.
He is coming?
He said he's headed that way.
Well, he might show up by the time we're done. No, we'll spend a little time talking more about the comprehensive plan stuff. First item on our discussion that has been on our agenda for the past couple of meetings is the ADU bylaw update. So, just for historical knowledge, for purposes of the audience, we updated our ADU bylaw in May at town meeting. But then the state came out with an updated law regarding ADUs being a piece of that that supersedes what we passed at our town meeting in May. That came out in July or August. And it goes into effect in February, February 5th-ish, 4th, some beginning of February.
Thank you.
And so we have to update our zoning bylaw again to comply with this state bylaw to make sure it's not in conflict. And so we, in order to do that, in order to get on the town meeting warrant for May, we need to hold public hearing on it, but that means that we need to have a public hearing on it probably. As you mentioned, Doug, we need to have it before the February 5th law goes into effect, ideally.
Yeah.
Is our next meeting before February 5th?
Yeah, we have a January meeting and then, because we meet the first Wednesday.
February 4th, February 5th is the Wednesday, isn't it? Am I wrong on that?
That'd be impressive if you knew that. It actually is the 5th of February. So we could just plan to have, yeah, so we need to have a cleaned up, compliant, updated ADU bylaw. We need it before February because we need to post the hearing notice two weeks before that, blah, blah, blah. So we need it for our next meeting.
End of January.
So we still?
So, I know. So we need this by our next, like finalized by our next meeting.
Okay.
So, excuse me, Doug, are we still under confusion from the state?
So that's a good question. That was something that I needed, when you mean confusion, like?
Well, it seems to be there's been different plans presented and accepted and then altered and then altered again and then altered again. So at what point do we have a final say from the state?
Right, because there's been like, right, to your point, the state.
You know, if we, if we come up with something ourselves and all of a sudden the state overrides it, then, you know, that's not a good situation for us.
Well, we should just be taking most of the language from this.
Yeah, we can only deal with what they've released.
From the state.
The NGO, whatever.
And then complying it with our bylaws.
Okay.
And then if we wanted to be more, we can't be more restrictive, we have to be, but we can be more.
Our own flavor, but completely.
Or leaning?
Yes, we can. Like if we wanted to make them bigger than 900 square feet.
No, actually, you can't.
You can't.
No, you can't, because the state limits it to no more than 900 square feet. If, if Hatfield wanted to propose a bylaw that allows second dwellings on lots that exceed 900 square feet, they're welcome to do that. But, but they wouldn't be an ADU.
That's the definition of the state, right? Okay.
There is, I did go through the language. I did just check it again. And there was, and I sent out not only the revised version, which shows all the cuts and the additions, but also a summary version, which shows what it would look like with all those changes made. I would encourage, if, if possible, if there's the budget to do it, to pass that bylaw to Towns Council and have them review it and vet it against the Affordable Homes Act and see if we're in compliance. We could also wait until after the public hearing, too.
Yeah, anything that goes on the town warrant, town meeting warrant agenda gets vetted anyway by council, so I don't know if it would.
Be redundant?
Would we want, I don't know the cost to that.
I guess I just wouldn't want to wait until the last minute to have council say, oh, this whole section of this is bad.
Correct.
And now we don't have time to change it.
Yeah, we should probably.
It's important to know if we can, you know, get a one fee, one review, rather than.
Just going through it, just maybe highlight it and make sure it's getting, that specifically is getting better.
Or he doesn't need to focus that much on it when it's.
We're trying to get ahead of this, right. We're trying to get ahead of this. We don't want to wait till the last minute.
Right.
Review, when everything gets reviewed.
Yep.
Do we have to double up on hours for this?
And so do we, for, for everything to be ready for us to like internally, bless it, at our January meeting, do we just want to stick to what the state has allowed and then we can entertain any additions or changes at the public hearing?
I think that makes sense.
Like if somebody's like, we should put bigger setbacks around something, or, you know, if there's other things that be more creative around it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of the things that, that could be proposed, is that an ADU requires greater setbacks than regular dwellings. Or greater, greater distance between any accessory, any, sorry, any other dwelling, whether it's on the same lot or not.
Right.
That might be one of the things that somebody might suggest.
So, yeah, and we can entertain all those things. I'm just curious, do we want to entertain them at the next meeting? And incorporate them in, ahead of the public hearing, or do we just want to put what's in the state law and then wait till February to hash some of those things out?
My personal preference would be to take what we've got for proposed changes, have a good solid look at it ourselves in January.
Okay.
And if we're good with that, then we post a public hearing notice. That is what gets presented to the public for review. They come in with comments. If we get 12 people coming in and saying, oh, more distance, more distance, or whatever, we can still make that change before it gets submitted as a warrant article.
Okay.
And if nobody comes in, or if people come and say, and say, this is great.
And who knows, by then you might find, there could be other things that come up.
It's interesting, because it's pretty robust definition of what's going down from Boston.
I think you should try to post this as the first item on the agenda also. So people don't think they have to come and sit through the whole meeting to get to their interested thing. And this seems to be one of our larger things to deal with right now.
In February, you mean, at public hearing?
No, in January. Well, even kind of the next meeting, let's have it as their first agenda item. So, you know, if people are here, they get to hear and say what they got to say without sitting through a lot.
We're, we're at the 4th of December, right, so we got.
Yes, there's.
Six days to get a thing posted.
Oh, no, we're not going to post until like mid-January.
All right, so for February.
But we are going to finalize and approve whatever we're going to put and post at our next meeting. So I don't see Doug's copy in here, even though, yeah, you forwarded it.
Must have missed that. I did read it. Go print it out. I thought it was going to be in the packet. Do you want me to do?
I think it'd be helpful, because either, even if we don't get to discussing it further tonight.
I was a little confused, because this was the first thing in the packet, and I thought maybe that's what, but I assumed it was your edits that you've been sending out.
Or you can wait till the end of the meeting and go, because we all should take them home. Thank you. Any other thoughts on ADU bylaw update? That, to me, is going to be, so if anything else that we want to put on the town meeting warrant related to updating our zoning bylaws, we don't have to be as strict with the February, but like, we definitely need to know within the next couple of meetings what's going to be on there so we can have space on the warrant.
Agreed.
Was the preference to have that reviewed by Town Council before the January meeting?
Before the February meeting.
Yeah, after January.
After the board has looked at it, goes to Town Council for February. That sounds great.
And then, I'm not sure if you have a deadline, if you and Marlene have talked, or you have a deadline for the end of when you would want to know if there's going to be space for us to put anything on the warrant. It's usually like the end of January-ish is when, I believe, in the past, Marlene has wanted to know, like, hey, is the Planning Board planning to have any?
I think this is early enough that we can count this as knowing.
Yeah, but if there's anything else, because there is some like low hanging fruit that.
Yeah.
I just, yeah, whenever you know, that would be.
Great.
And we don't need to like know, like, generally, it's like, yes, we just need space. It's not like we need to know the exact thing usually by the end of February, end of January.
I'll feature the chairman.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Helpful to have you here with that question. Moving along, next item on the agenda, if we're good to move that way. I first, I kind of want to swap the agenda items and have an update from you, Bella, first, is that okay? Before we talk about, the, this is like, the item thing is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission zoning recommendations. It's kind of, it's more outcomes from the comprehensive plan, which is related to this packet here and the, and this size.
Magnifying glass.
Two font, but nice and helpful spreadsheet that Bella's made around with similar basically things, outcomes from the comprehensive plan and things that we could prioritize. So, I'm guessing that maybe some of your update will have to do with these things, and then we can segue and have a joint conversation.
I think it will segue well.
Okay.
Mostly, everything that I wanted to talk about is about zoning and housing, and just like some thoughts I've been having about it. The first thing would be that, you know this at least, but Stephanie, but the Stephen Turner thing that you all talked about last time. He's walked away from 121 West Street because of wetland variables, and he was interested in two parcels, which have come up before on North, Zero North Hatfield Road, which, incidentally, are being, the wetlands are being redelineated for those, and they're much bigger than was previously thought. So I think those parcels, there was an intent maybe to try to sell them for an open space development, because it's two parcels together. And it's clear, this is the RDA that's going to Concom next week. The wetlands take up almost the entirety of both parcels. And so I think the only thing that's possible on even the southern one is just a single family home.
Is this the, is this the parcel across the street from?
The old food bank?
The former food bank, yeah.
Yes.
That's two lots, isn't it?
Grand Donico has.
They're mostly wet.
Yeah.
It's only relevant because I think we were, it's just another parcel that maybe isn't available for open space development that partially was. And it's come up a few times with different developers who've been interested in specifically those first 121 West and then those two. And neither really.
So 121 West is the one that we talked about at the last meeting?
Yeah.
And there are wetland issues there because of?
In the back, but not nearly as extensive as on these.
Yeah, right, fair enough.
So, yeah, that was just an update. He's not going to do 121 West. He emailed us about that. And then he's looking at Zero North Hatfield, but it doesn't look like that's possible either for, his proposal was for a commercial rental space for, I guess, like different tenants to come rent.
How, how is that property zoned right now?
That's residential.
Okay, so that's a hard no.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is what happened before with the developer. He wanted a zoning change, and we had to tell him it wasn't possible.
Or it would just.
On his timeline.
Right.
But I kind of hoped that by spelling out how complex these two other parcels were for him, when it comes to wetlands, but also zoning, he might be more interested in 121 West again, but he hasn't said anything else. So that's that. And then I have been reading through the Housing Production Plan from 2015, and I'm wondering if we should get anyone. I don't know. It's based on, it's like, obviously, the comprehensive plan goes into housing, but not nearly as granularly as the Housing Production Plan does. But the whole thing is based on, it's based on the 2009 master plan, 2015 zoning bylaw, the 2014 OSRP, and PPPC's 2014 Regional Housing Plan.
And like, 80% of those things have changed.
Exactly. All of it.
Yeah.
And then a lot of the data that they're using for the 20, the data was even outdated at the time. They were using like 2013 data to do the 2015 housing plan. So I was wondering, I know 10% of the CPA funding has to go towards housing, so I was wondering if that might be a use for it.
0% has currently not gone to it.
Right. If like funding another housing production plan that's updated could be a use for that. And if possibly, I mean, because of the Stephen Turner thing has kind of raised questions for me about like, do we need, would it be smart to understand like the extent of wetlands along the 5 and 10? If they are bigger in a lot of places that we've zoned for certain types of development that maybe isn't feasible, and you're just going to have one developer coming after another that like proposes things that can't work. That might be interesting.
And that was pulled from the comprehensive plan, that a lot of our industrial, light industrial zone lands are wetlands. And can't, if something can be done on them, it can be very small and not, and it's kind of silly that it's zoned that way.
Exactly.
But that's where we want the development, along, generally, along that corridor of 5 and 10, then that's where the wetlands are.
Right. So I was wondering if maybe that might be a thing to use CPA funding for. And then I was also looking into the light industrial zoning, because again, of the Stephen Turner thing. And I was just noticing that it's like there's a lot of different uses that are allowed in light industrial. And we were talking about whether we needed to figure out if it's like, makes sense to have light industrial and industrial, or what they're both doing there. And I was reading about the 40R Smart Growth Overlay, and obviously, that's recommended like five times in the comprehensive plan, that we look for a place for that. And I was wondering if maybe, because the uses that are already assigned to light industrial are so diverse, it might make sense to swap out some of the light industrial zone spots for a Smart Growth Overlay in certain places, because there's like.
Because I'm ignorant to this particular, no, no, maybe I am broadly ignorant, I don't know. Can you bullet point 40R?
Yeah, so it's like dense, multi-type housing. It's like condos, townhouses, not as many single-family homes, but apartments. There has to be 20% affordable housing. It encourages mixed use. And you get $10,000 to $600,000 in state funding, plus $3,000 per new affordable home that you create.
And who's, who gets that money? The developer?
Developer.
The town.
The town.
Right.
And then if you create a 40R zoning district, you also get Chapter 40S funding, which covers the cost of educating new students moving into the town. So it's like a good deal. And if, so if we created, we already have the mixed use overlay, but if we created a Chapter 40R overlay, there's all these benefits. But I was just curious because of how diver, it's like in the light industrial zone, you can put small-scale retail, restaurants, churches, vet offices, schools, childcare center, like it goes on, parks and playgrounds, libraries, museums, farm businesses and farm stands. And so it's like, if we want a mixed use zone, it might, it might just be a place to look.
There's a point, as you go north on 5 and 10, as you go north on West Street, there's a point at which it transitions from what I would term light industrial, or the more business side of things, to more residential. And that point is actually south of 121 West Street, I'd think. Because from that.
Sewer stops.
Unfortunately, the sewer stop. And I think if you're going to put it in a 40, a 40R zoning overlay there, you've got to extend the sewer there.
Right.
There's no way, no way around it.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that's out of the question. It's something we need to consider.
But it's a, it was a big problem for all these developers, too. They were really bummed about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, the, just to comment quickly on the zoning of 5 and 10, it's actually interesting. There's like pockets of business. It's like the business zone, then it's residential, and then it's light industrial, industrial, and then it's residential, and then it's like business zone again slash light industrial.
The whole mess, yeah.
Because it's patchy, and that speaks to our zoning map in general being patchy because of.
Spot zoning.
To put it frankly.
Yeah, just spot zoning.
Because there's people, there was neighbors who like, I, I grew up in 5 and 10, lived here my entire life. It's a, you know.
I have the right to sell Harry half of my property and let him build a house there. And that's kind of what happened over time.
Well, no, it's more that they're like, no, I want it to stay a residential neighborhood.
So there is one large property that is not being discussed right now, and that's Steeble's property.
Yep, we will have to, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Steeble's property at the end of, end of.
It's the reason why we extended the sewer line. They were the ones that.
At the end of North Hatfield Road, there's a barn across the street, and there's about 65 acres. It goes all the way up Polynseed Road.
Okay.
He had plans to put a solar housing development in there.
Okay.
And he died.
And he put in a giant warehouse for his business, Steeble Eltron, and to make like this dog park thing, like a very interesting idea that they came before us and talked high level. No, no plans actually ever got to us. But they told us this is what they wanted to do.
Right.
And then, yeah, he's passed away. He's since passed away, and so there's questions as to what, and I think we just have to wait, Jimmy, because we don't know.
Well, I saw his daughter.
But 40R encourages mixed use? So the possibility for light retail, small retail shops.
Exactly.
Museums, small restaurants, that sort of thing. All of that is possible.
And like the same idea of what this, like a small industrial park kind of thing, like this guy wanted to do.
Sure. So to me, that smells like farm-based zoning, where you're not as worried about what's actually happening within the buildings. You're more worried about the overall expression of the development in that area.
If it does allow at least amount of design guidelines from there, if there's things you see happen.
Sure, sure. Well, it, what it would mean is we'd be assessing proposals for development and using a different set of rules, a different set of criteria. We're not as concerned about whether or not you want to put in a small mechanicking shop or a residence. We're more concerned about how is that going to impact your neighbors and what will the overall appearance of the structure and the, and the use look like? Which I, I'm good with that, because that allows the greatest flexibility and encourages development.
Exactly. Thinking also back to the comprehensive plan, they recommend, the committee in the plan recommends rezoning all of 5 and 10 to be more consistent, whether it's all business or all, you know, moving.
If you had a more flexible zone, you could be more consistent. It wouldn't be patchy.
To make it less patchy is, is what the recommendation is. Would you need to do that if you made all of the whole corridors an overlay? Like, how does that work? An overlay over residential zone?
You mean over the whole, like, industrial, light industrial, residential? If you did a 40R overlay over it? I mean, I think it would be, if it's like following the essence of the recommendation, like if the recommendation is that you want less conflicting zones across from each other. I feel like, but are you talking about like literally like setbacks?
No, I'm talking about overlay districts in general, overlaying over others.
Instead of an overlay, I'd really prefer that we just create the new zone.
Yeah, you could, exactly.
And encompass that whole area, because if a 40R zone allows for all these various uses, then you're not telling anybody, get out, it's no longer a residential district.
What I don't know is if you just created a new zone, would you still get all the perks of the state overlay? Or not? Because they're, like, they have this Smart Growth Overlay program. I'm sure if you just create a zone, it's the same as an overlay. I don't know.
Have to get more on that.
Exactly.
So I think it allows you a lot more flexibility, but it might not solve for the problem that you're identifying of trying to make it less of a patchwork, potentially. But it would add some more definition to what you want to see developed in that site, I think, just by what 40R does allow for. Be more of the kind of growth that you'd want to see in a somewhat more dense-ish, allowing for residential neighborhood.
So the question is whether 40R is only an overlay?
That's what I'm.
Is only, yeah, okay.
That's what I wonder.
It's an overlay, I think.
But would you get the same like reward if you just called it a new zone?
From the state, I don't think you would.
That's what I'm wondering, okay.
Okay, so we leave the zoning exactly as it is and drop 40R on top of it and.
That's what I, yeah.
Or, or both? Or you make the changes to the zoning that you want to see and pass an overlay.
Sure.
There's like a, that's a, so that's like, right, do you take, again, going a patchwork approach? Or do you, I, I would like us to get to a point where we're really looking at our entire zoning in general. But that's going to be like a five, that's like a four or five-year project, but you're looking at it more holistically, you're, maybe less than that. But you're, you're taking a more holistic look at your zoning and blah, blah, blah. Or do you like, say, okay, we're going to focus on 5 and 10 this upcoming year? And this is more of like a strategy thing around how to approach some of these recommendations from the comprehensive plan. And a lot of it comes down to funding, too, and, yeah, capacity, so.
Yeah.
So other factors, that we already have several projects going on in 5 and 10. The construction company are there at the end of Prospect Street. The pickleball court, the tennis court. There's just been a lot going on on that street. I'm not sure that if it comes up at a town meeting situation, people aren't going to be saying, I'm so fed up with the trucks and the, and the, and the noise. Somebody complaining about the noise today in paper. You know, I'm not sure that we're, we're not going to get a bunch of backlash.
I mean, there's always going to be haters, Jimmy.
Oh, yeah.
But that's, that's a good point.
Right, I think that we just need to be cognizant of people's feelings, that they may not really like it. They may be an vast minority. So let's listen carefully and do what's right.
The, the selling point of the 40R overlay is that, first of all, you're not changing the underlying zoning, but the 40R would restrict, because it's zoning, sitting on top of the, the base zone, it's regulation sitting on top of the base zone. You're saying that maybe if somebody wants to put in a truck depot, which might be allowed in the base zoning, 40R may not allow it. And because it's trying to moderate and, and balance residential, commercial, retail, you know, and some light industrials, trying to create that balance. So that's, that's actually a defense in favor of the people who want it to be a little quieter, a little calmer, not see this broad of industrial-style development. It's one way to approach it, and it's definitely a financial benefit for the town, so.
I mean, to me, that's, I'm glad you're bringing this up now, because this is something that we could put in place by town meeting. To me, it seems like an easier thing to put, you could put 40R in place by then, do you think?
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
Okay.
And there's, there's a process for doing it.
There's a lot of support.
It's more, it's more than just changing the zoning, right?
People do it.
And I know the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, one of their deliverables was helping set up, or giving us the steps to do that.
Totally.
Have you ever used the state's planning, planning and zoning assistance grants here?
Not recently.
So that could be useful to apply for. That'll be open next June, and that's usually around $50,000 for, for technical assistance for, for planning initiatives.
Three?
Could be nice.
3,000, you said? Oh, 50. Oh, much better.
Or real money, yeah.
Real money, okay.
Well, that like engagement, like, let's dilate our wetlands along the town line of 5 and 10. I was like, whoa, that is, oh, man, yeah, that is an engagement.
Engaged. So, yeah, that's something we could plan to do for next town meeting. Because to me, I feel like we could do the overlay, but still keep the zoning as like, for the, from a political aspect, you're keeping, you're not doing too many things at once.
You would need to not only create the map, which shows the overlay.
Yep.
Add that to the overlay maps. You'd also need to create the regulation inside the zoning, which defines what's possible, what's not, and how projects are reviewed.
The delta.
I assume.
Right, which we, if we applied for funding in June, when do they give you the money?
After the.
Close in July, I think they get back to you within a month or two. It's, that's one of the faster programs. So you'd find out in August, you'd be able to hire a consultant to help jumpstart that process, and then.
We also do have, I think, 10 or 11 grand that usually is allocated for extra consultants that we need, too, so that's also. So that's also something that we haven't used this year. It's also something, that's the whole thing. There's so many different options, like we need to pick the thing that we want to do.
That it makes sense to look at where the action is happening faster and what you might want to try to curtail sooner. If it was development that you're not as excited about, that doesn't necessarily fit with the, the plan, and focusing on that first. That was what I thought I was hearing from this group.
Yeah, so other stuff. There's just, it's actually related to this too, but I went to.
I want to acknowledge also Lee Bell is here.
There he is.
My apologies. When did you show up?
You're on record.
Been here a while.
I went to this, it's the National Flood Insurance Program. It was a webinar called Beyond the Building Code I went to today. I'm sure everyone knows this, but FEMA has updated its flood insurance rate maps.
Do they officially do that yet?
I don't know if they officially did. There's much hubbub about it that I went to and everything about it.
They were forwarded to me today, yes.
They're officially.
I think they're finished, or at least Western Mass, yeah.
So what we, so just for the public's awareness, we were using those, those new updated maps, even though they weren't officially yet for our comprehensive plan. And top, which is great, and incorporated that data in our comprehensive plan, which is great.
That's great.
But top line for people, that was mentioned at our comprehensive plan last, presentation last meeting, is that basically what was the 500-year floodplain is now a 100-year floodplain. And so if anything, it'll increase folks with flood insurance and increase the land area for folks that need flood insurance, especially where do you know? We're sitting here and up along, yeah, Main Street, basically.
Totally. And let's see, basically, we are an NFIP community, which means that we get insurance from the state, so we have to have certain bylaws and codes in place. What I didn't really know is that you're supposed to have those in place and that does help you to enforce and regulate what can go in the floodplain. And that I think, you know, it's worth reading through our bylaws and making sure that they're robust enough that we can do what we want with them, if we want to say this shouldn't go here. But then they'd mentioned regulation of subdivisions, public services in the floodplain, and that we have to have sort of language around that in order to be an NFIP community. But one thing.
Serve public services in the floodplain, like our fire department, like our police department, like our schools, like our.
Public housing, yeah, exactly. And that there's a few actions, I was thinking, the floodplain, I know we have a bylaw, but I think the overlay, like the floodplain overlay in the zoning map probably should be updated and also to reflect the new extent of the floodplain, but then also the floodplain overlay is not in the table of uses in our zoning at all, so that could be added. And as of now, all agricultural uses are currently allowed in the floodplain, which obviously makes sense, but they did mention that according to FEMA, you're not allowed to store any like chemicals in the floodplain, which seems like there's probably a lot of.
There's probably a lot of that happening?
Agricultural chemicals in the floodplain, I don't know about. So that might be something to look into. And then also, they talked about, they did talk about agricultural equipment. There's a whole thing about this that I didn't have, I was doing this today at like 3:30, so I didn't, I didn't have time to read, but there's a big thing from FEMA about what agricultural equipment is allowed in the floodplain and how they deal with that.
Like allowed to operate or allowed to be stored?
Stored, maybe. I haven't read it, so. But they have a big hefty document about it. And then the last thing is that ADUs, I'm curious, apparently there, there is a thing where some towns don't allow ADUs in the floodplain because they're seen as kind of like a certainly like a tiny house might not be allowed in the floodplain if it's not, if it's like sitting on a slab.
If a dwelling is allowed in the floodplain, then an ADU has to be allowed in the floodplain.
It's like the same.
I feel especially with the new state law.
Absolutely, with, yeah.
I think so. I just was curious because.
Sounds like to me ways for town to say, no ADUs.
I just want to look into it because I would assume that the ADU has to have the same exact code requirements as any other dwelling.
Actually, under nine, the building inspector can correct me if I'm wrong, but 900 square feet or less, you're actually relieved of some of the building code requirements, some of the stretch code requirements. So it's actually easier. Like, for example, they, they, the envelope test, the air tightness test of a structure, under 900 square feet, you don't have to do it.
Right. They just don't want anything floating away and like banging into anything else. So as long as it's not, that's what it's about. So as long, so they don't allow like mobile homes in the floodplain.
Fair enough.
But so as long as their ADUs are not.
How about houseboats? That seems dicey.
Yeah, so it just.
That's just planning ahead.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That should be the only housing allowed in floodplain. That's just practical.
Yeah, so I just wanted to look it up. I just wanted to see if there's any conflict between anything going on with ADUs and them drifting away. I don't really think that's the ones people are going to be tilting, but it's just a ding in my mind.
Well, sounds like there's a lot of stuff for us to handle.
Yeah.
Before we, I mean, this, we're still on item, we're still on item number three, right?
Yes, we, yes.
Good, I'm done.
Without really even getting to item number two.
It's two.
We haven't gotten item number two yet?
I mean, two and three are together.
So that's it. We can talk zoning now.
But there's a lot there though. Like, is there something, like, I'm trying to think about, okay, like, what is something that is non-controversial, low-hanging fruit that might be something we want to update at our, at town meeting, for example?
Are you talking about these?
No, like, just some of the stuff that you talked about now, like, oh, the flood, the floodplain overlay district is missing from our zoning bylaws, for example.
Like a good one. Yeah, because it's not, I think it's in the bylaws, it's just not in the table of uses. So if we added to the table of uses, that might be easy. I mean, not easy, easy, but it's certainly, we already have the bylaw. But this is complicated, so.
So the.
What are you about, talking about putting a dagger in the table of use, like unacceptable one floodplain as of 2024, unacceptable, that type of thing?
Be adding another, another row in the table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A yes, no, call.
So you know where it says like rural, residential, industrial, all those things that are allowed?
In floodplain.
In the floodplain, it would be.
Yes.
Yeah, which is probably, which we would probably just want to limit to just a residential, things that we would allow in a residential zone.
I don't even know if you'd have to, I mean, maybe you would, but I, if it's, if we're just creating basically a chart out of what's already in the bylaws, we're just adding to the chart what's in the bylaws, if you're not changing, you're just.
Yeah, just clarifying.
Right, it's just easier to use.
The overlay also will further restrict even just like a residence, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the floodplain overlay would restrict things like underground fuel tanks. Which might be accessory to a regular residential dwelling, which would be permitted.
And you can't have like.
Not anymore in this town.
No? Underground fuel tanks, you mean?
Nope.
Okay, fair enough.
Or you also can't have.
Buried propane tanks?
Nope.
Not allowed?
It'd be above the ground.
Everything's above ground.
Fair enough.
You also can't have full-size basement in the floodplain currently, I believe.
If you're in the floodplain, the bottom of the first floor has to be above the 100-year flood mark.
Right.
Yes.
So, yeah.
But there's also just template language for the floodplain overlay district that we could drop into the zoning bylaw because it's all pretty basic. And then we just adopt the map.
I think that's it. Or the map is already adopted.
Well, the map is there. You, your, your zoning regulation points to the map. It says, this shall refer to the updated firm maps from 2023 or whatever they are.
I mean, I don't know what goes into updating our actual, like the literal overlay on our map, like our zoning map.
That's assessors and GIS and whatever.
So somebody just says that.
PBPC can help with that, I'm sure.
Or Conway School also, yeah, could offer it.
Yeah, but that should be, that should be low-hanging fruit. That should be pretty simple.
Conway can't do it this year, so we have to ask PBPC.
Which we do have some money for.
Yeah, and they have all this information, so.
So to clarify, we do not have, we do have a map, it's referenced in our bylaws, or it's not referenced in our bylaws, we do have.
The floodplain overlay is on the zoning map.
Gotcha.
We do also have the bylaw, like, you know, this is what's allowed in like paragraph form.
Oh, but it's not in the table of use. Oh, so it would just be clarifying that.
Yeah, yeah.
So what, to your point, would we need, I guess we would still probably need to bring it to town meeting because you're changing the zoning, like the contents of the zoning bylaw.
I guess so.
Right, because you're adding an extra column in a table.
Yeah, you're changing the table uses, that has to go.
But we're just saying, we're just clear, yeah, okay. Yeah, but it would be low-hanging fruit.
It seems like it, okay.
Would we need to update, and we would, we need to update the floodplain overlay with these new FEMA maps?
That's what I'm saying, is the extent of the floodplain has changed, and I don't know what that looks like for us. I just know that they have changed. I don't know, you know, it would be like comparing and getting some GIS person, I guess, to compare them and see if we need to extend.
Which we probably do.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, I don't know, like, what happens with, like, you know, something that would otherwise be like a non-conforming use in the floodplain. Are you allowed to have, like, just somebody that has a basement? It's like, obviously their basement just stays there. It's just, is it just for new?
It's pre-existing non-conforming, just like any other.
Just like anything else.
Whatever, but, so like a pre-existing non-conforming biz, like use, though, like, let's say there's a business operating in there.
Existing non-conforming use?
Right.
I assume that's how it works, just like anything else.
Somebody has a gas station, now it's in the floodplain because of the change of maps. They still have a gas station.
They can't, right.
But if they want to add a pump, it now becomes a higher lift.
Right.
It's possible that it becomes a modification to a special permit.
Right.
Or a special.
And I think it just gives us more ability to say, we don't want like a new gas station in the floodplain.
Absolutely.
And then I do, yeah, in terms of like lower hanging stuff, I do think like asking about using CPA funding for a housing production plan makes sense.
Although I think the application deadline is passed for town meeting to get that money, so we'd have to wait till next year for that.
Work with what we have. We'll work with what we have. There's.
So, I, I, in my mind, I'm doing some math, if, if the zoning grant that was mentioned earlier could be applied for and gotten, then we could apply for CPC fundings to supplement that, then that could provide more resources for a comprehensive zoning review.
Then we can look into the 40 R thing.
Yeah, because then it's like, do we, like I said, the project that's probably going to take a while and that we could knock out a lot of these things is a complete relook at our zoning map in general. And simplify, in some ways, simplifying some of our zoning bylaws and our table of use, and like taking a big comprehensive look at that, which is going to cost a lot of money, yeah. And that would probably be, is that what we, that you could use something like that for the planning local assistance grant, probably?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the question, is like, where do we want to apply for buckets of money for certain things and, right?
There's, there's the what about changing the zoning, the, the mechanics of doing it, the, the language, the legal review, so on and so forth, but then there's the, what it is we actually want to see. And that to me is the part that we don't need grant funding for because that's conversations with people. And that's reaching out to people, having conversations, looking at different places, throwing ideas out on the table and seeing what works. But also becoming educated on the different zoning tools that we have available now. So to me, that's something I'd like to get started on soon. If grant money later on comes down the line, and great, fantastic, but.
And like a lot of it is reinforced in the comprehensive plan, like we're not just like coming up with this stuff.
That should handle a lot of the outreach and the conversations.
Yeah, that can be part of it.
If you think the plan is representative of where people want to go.
Feels like it is.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was, I mentioned this too with the, because the question, that's, question came up with the, at the committee, like, is it been a good representation? And we had some like very different people, different backgrounds on the committee and different perspectives and stuff, which was really helpful. But we were all like pretty aligned on some specific things, which was good. And they all came to bear, like comprehensive plan is like focuses, so, even though I say focus, because there's a lot in there, but. Any thoughts from the quiet folk sitting over here digesting all this information?
I'm good with all that's been going on.
I know, we need like a five-year plan, like a digest of, like, okay, but this comprehensive plan is like a 20-year plan roadmap. We need like a, what is the planning board's five-year plan roadmap for some of this stuff? And like, how do we get the funding for it and align it with the timing and all of that? Those are things that I'm interested in.
Not a bad conversation to have.
That's what I'm interested in, figuring out that, the, that chart, it's like 99% of the things in there are supposed to be done in five years. There's like one thing that's like a.
We're leaving.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, as we finish.
Everything is short-term.
Next five, next five, next five.
Yeah.
Think this is a little cat on the small side.
Yeah, and one of the things that always that's, that came up a lot is like, we do not have enough, we don't have affordable housing for, for what the state says, supposed to have the 10%. We have like 2, 3%.
4.7 or something.
Which is bad, for a bunch of reasons, but a legal reason is like, then that development can come in and be like. So there's like, that came up a lot.
Yep.
And that's what the housing production plan is.
Supposed to, exactly.
Give you a five-year plan for how to try to.
How to tackle that?
I was wondering, like, I mean, I guess I, it makes sense that the zoning thing would take much longer, but like, should the housing production plan inform the zoning rethinking or the other way around? Or should they be happening at the same time? Do you know what I mean?
Doesn't your comprehensive plan inform your zoning redevelopment?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's the base level that we're starting at.
Right.
They got to go together. I think they have to be part of the same effort.
So help me understand a little bit more about the housing production plan. What, how does that work as a tool? What does that do for the town?
It's just very detailed, let's see, it's the big thing.
Does it unlock like funding opportunities?
That's a state requirement. In order to be committed to the 10% SHI, you also need to have an active housing production plan, which shows, you know, what your plan is to, to be catching up with the amount of affordable housing you're supposed to have now and into the future. It, I, I wouldn't use it at all as a reason not to get going with the other zoning that you know you want to do. Because I think a lot of that comes from the comprehensive plan. It's actually kind of a shame that you now have to do this process too after you're already on the comprehensive plan. It should make the housing production plan a lot easier to put together. So it's a state requirement and we just get you a little more granular into housing, especially on the affordable side. But I think a lot of that's already in your house.
So if we haven't really acted on the housing production plan from 2015, because that's what I'm curious, is like how much of it.
You update the numbers, you update the strategies.
But do we have a strategy?
We have one in place since, right?
In 2015, in 2015, some of that might still be relevant, and then there might be new ideas that came in.
Well, like 40 R, which only came into being years ago, so, yeah.
And if it's based on, like, an outdated OSRP, for instance, that's like.
OSRP as in?
Open Space Separation.
Open Space Separation Plan, yeah.
If it's based in our creation plan, yeah, if it's based on that, which is from 2014, and we have a new one, that's like one thing that might really shape where we would want to put housing.
Right.
Exactly. Right, and they might, I mean, there's probably new, like you're saying, new tools like 40 R that they might just be able to recommend to us that we wouldn't have thought of in here. And then also, it is just, I guess, if we're making 0.5% progress every year towards the 10% goal, then we're off the hook with a comprehensive permit, so if we knew.
But we're not even there, though, so.
Right. I don't, we'd have to know what 0.5% even looks like in order to know if we're needing that.
The other difficulty is that the town doesn't build houses. All that the town can do is provide provisions for a developer to come in and create housing. Unless the town actively commits money to take land and then request for proposals, give it to somebody, with the understanding that they're going to build it. That's a recipe for disaster, if you ask me. That's just not a good idea. If it's a habitat for humanity that's going to build, you know, smallish houses and, yeah, but.
And they might only do like a couple houses at a time. It's not, they usually, which is fine, right. So there actually is a, I was actually going to reach out to them, because if we do, if you do see parcels, there's been one particular parcel for sale on Main Street, or not Main Street, on five and 10 for a while, it's weird because there's, it's long and narrow, so you'd have to build a certain specific kind of.
What are you talking about?
But I was like, I, wouldn't that be something like, you don't have, we have CPA money to buy, we could facilitate something to be put in a couple of, you could do a two-family house there or whatever, or like a few condos on there if we worked with Habitat or something like that. Reached out to them and they didn't contact me, so I'll try again.
There you go.
Who'd you go, greater Springfield one or?
No, the North Hampton area one, or one in Florence. But those, that's why, like, we don't have relationships with any of those people, like with any, like Habitat or Valley CDC or those types of affordable housing developers, and so I would like us to have relationships with them, so you can start having those conversations.
Outreach, yeah.
Is the property that you're talking about, does it have access to the new sewer line extension? Okay, so.
It's the, the one that, they came before us to split it in half, split the parcel in half. There's a house on one piece and then. and then it's a field with like half of a barn, a 91.
Okay, so.
And it's been for sale for like a year.
Right, so in that case, no, the town can't build housing, but let's propose that. CPC funds buys the land. CPC funds then also ensures, you know, you find a developer who will build a couple of duplexes, let's say, on that property. And CPC guarantees that, you know, you're going to build these, you're going to deed restrict them, and you're going to sell them at a deed restricted value. We will pay you the outstanding amount. Whatever you can prove that you spent to build these, CPC will, will make up the difference between what you can sell it for under the deed restriction.
That's one option.
You know, one option, just, that would be a way to get affordable housing built.
Right, or like.
Without the town actually building it.
Or like, because our town, like, I think most small towns are strapped and might not have the expertise, one, expertise to the bandwidth to do that well. That's why you bring in somebody like Habitat, who has probably the infrastructure set up to do that.
Sure, absolutely.
You would habitat, you commit to buying the land and Habitat builds the house, or however that works.
Right. So, I mean, that's one way to add a half a percent every year.
Right.
Creative ideas like that, so.
And not a lot of land goes for sale, and if it does, it sells quickly, or it's very expensive.
Right.
And that parcel's in there for a while. Like I said, it's weird, it'll even be weird things that could happen, like the way that it is, it's narrow and small, you could be very.
It's not too small.
We have 35-yard fronted backyard and front yard setbacks makes it, so that I think it can only be like 50 feet or 6, 7, 60 feet.
In terms of the structure, yeah.
It can be long, but it can't be deep. So, those are, that's something that I, yeah, was just thinking, yeah, totally, doing more outreach about that.
Okay, over that.
I mean, yeah, so based on what Bella said, based on this spreadsheet, based on this document that I have had printed, I had Lori print off around things that came from the comprehensive plan, things that we should be prioritizing. Yeah, the other thing on my, the other thing that we talked about at the last meeting that Andrew, with you here, I'll just bring up too, is the Complete Streets program, we're not a part of that, and I think that's a low. And I feel like that's something that could be fairly straightforward to get going. But I don't know, but then there.
That's the select board that has to adopt the policy initially.
It's involved, but.
Involved.
It's not that involved.
How low-hanging is the fruit?
There's so much support for it, but it's, there's steps.
Well, but the, the policy is boilerplate. You start with the initial policy, and it's, there's 16 different models out there in the state that you can crib from.
Exactly.
Put together a prioritization plan based on some of the roads and the places you want to make safer and.
But that's, that's step two, or step three. Yeah.
Yeah. It basically is helpful in getting grant money and things for like sidewalks and more walkable and creating safer, like bike-friendly streets and things.
Totally. We should absolutely be a part of it. I don't know.
And, but that's the thing, is I don't think that's us leading it, that was.
That's the select board leading it.
Select board leading it, but we would love to be a part of that conversation and are happy to do that, and I don't know how to get that going, but that would be something that seems like.
I'm happy to work on it.
Should we do the legwork for them, if it's, you know?
I don't know, yeah.
Just kick it off, get it rolling?
TPW is also applied. There was that whole little mix-up where like they have applied for like a bunch of other types of like street safety programs.
There's shared, shared streets and spaces, a grant that's even easier to get, and they applied for that.
They're already getting money for that, right? Through Chapter 90?
They've applied for another.
They have it again.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That was a COVID era program, they just kept doing it, and it's good.
So I can, I can understand why there would be confusion, because the names sound very similar.
And then there's Safer to School, and then there's, there's.
There's a number of programs, yeah.
A lot of programs.
So you talked to the select board. Do we need to do anything?
You can make sure I talk to the select board.
And then, so, I know these are like things we're just thinking about, talking about, but there are things that we need to kind of decide if we want to bring them to town meeting. It sounds like the flood plane overlay, low-hanging fruit, like looking at updating the map.
Right, finding out what that involves.
Yeah, and if that's something that could happen before, like, April, May, or, I mean, March.
Can I assist with that? In terms of the, the language of the zoning, sure.
The language is already there.
We just need to make sure that it actually, there's a couple.
Roll up in the table of use and be referenced to, reference to a table of use. It's not, in the table of use is what Bella's saying. Yeah.
Okay.
The language is there in paragraph form, I guess, but it's not tied to the table.
Talking about chucking in a yes/no column.
Right.
Easy enough, yeah.
Just elucidating the text.
But yeah, they could talk, yeah.
And then I don't even know who
We.
or how the actual zoning map is updated. Like, who does that flood plan? Like, literally, who puts it in? And what are they based on?
Is FEMA going to send it to everyone? Or who?
We're supposed to.
The, the GIS layer should be available through Mass GIS. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission should be able to just provide the overlay, or should be able to create the map.
Great, that's what I wanted to know.
I got to assume that they have the current GIS layers for the town zoning, right?
They definitely do, yeah.
Okay, so they should be able to just download the, the layer from Mass GIS.
FEMA thing.
And drop it in the, drop it in their stack, so, yeah.
So that.
And charge us a lot of money for colored prints, anyway.
Probably. And then the other zoning, the ADU thing, seems to be like, those are the two things that'll be happening for town meeting.
Cool, and then we'll look into 40R in a longer term.
The housing production plan, I think, too. Makes sense.
What's the approval process for the housing production plan? Does that have to be adopted by town meeting? Or is that just?
Through the select board.
Okay, so we can, we can work on that when we feel confident about that, or whomever, then. I don't even know who develops it. I mean, sorry, I.
It's typically done, I think PBPC would be the logical group to.
But I mean locally.
The last one.
What's the entity locally that would work on it?
Like the planning board.
It would be the planning board.
Oh, okay, that's funny, all right.
And we do have a housing committee. I am the only person on it, so.
Okay.
Apparently, the last one was Hatfield Housing Plan Advisory Committee and PBPC.
Yeah, you could put together an ad hoc committee, that the select board could do that. It's actually really run by our Affordable Housing Trust in Newburyport, and we're most recently doing it, which has some pros and cons. But yeah, you could put together an ad hoc.
Well, that's also something I'd be interested in helping with, so.
Okay, yeah, I don't know what best case would be to create, probably to create ad hoc, to ask other people in the community who want to be a part of that.
Definitely. I mean, I think it'd be nice to have open spaces involved.
The COA even.
Exactly.
And I know, like, I know that there's going to be the implementation or action committee from the comprehensive plan that will be, is supposed to be put together shortly in the new year, and so housing was a big passion of a lot of those people, so I don't know if some of them would, might be interested in also being a part of that, so. Cool. Would it make sense?
Try to keep the committee small.
Right, I know.
This shouldn't take that long.
Right, because I feel like it's.
Six people.
Yeah, yeah. And like, there's, most of the work is, I mean, like, you have, you already have a plan, we have the comprehensive plan.
Right.
It shouldn't be too much extra legwork, probably.
Basically, making sure that they correspond. Yeah, okay.
Okay. So town meeting, we've got flood plane overlay district, ADU. And then slightly longer term, housing production plan, Chapter 40R overlay.
Yeah.
And then applying for grant funding to, for a comprehensive zoning map bylaw.
Overhaul.
Overhaul, yeah. And trying to figure out what would be the best bucket of money to, for that application, because that'll be the largest amount of money.
So you're saying not 40R overlay by May?
I'm saying for, for, our 40R overlay, I think, we could do.
Bring it up at the town meeting.
I think we could do it not this town meeting, but like the next town meeting potentially. But then maybe like another town meeting or two from that, then do the whole comprehensive thing. The whole, because that'll probably take like two years to update it. I don't know, I'm just saying, probably.
But then if we wanted to apply, you're saying we would need to apply in June of this year for the
September release.
Planning and zoning assistance grant.
Yep.
Cool.
So, the, the overlay map feels like that's something that, not three, four, five years down the line?
No, I don't see that. It's already, the work's done.
The 40R thing?
Yeah.
No, yeah. Oh, what are you talking?
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize. I misspoke. I'm talking about the zoning map. I don't see that as being a five-year project.
You don't?
I really don't.
The whole zoning map?
Because you're not changing the language of the zoning, you're simply changing the map, just.
I think we're going to want to do both, though, because then once we do that, we're going to be like, well, why do we have the, what's the difference between industrial and industrial?
Can of worms.
Yeah, I think it's going to open a can of worms.
Ruin all my fun.
I mean, I want to get this done, like, next year too, but like.
Okay.
I mean, we could take a different approach, too, where we update the really obvious spot zones and do that in the next year or two. Or in the next year.
That would be political nightmare.
Right, that's why I want to just do it all at once.
I agree, I agree. So.
You can't do one at a time in this town.
I'm, I'm less interested than in the, the map revision. I'm more interested in the language revision of the zoning bylaw. I see that as being about a five-year project.
The language being.
Basically, looking at the entire zoning bylaw and cleaning up language, making a little more concise, providing flexibility for the various boards and committees to actually do their work.
I would like to see some more things in site plan review and less special permits for certain things, for sure.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see clear criteria for the various things in the, in the various zones. So that if somebody comes in and they meet all the criteria, you're out the door, goodbye, have fun, do your thing. Yeah, and less subjective review.
Agreed, yeah. Yeah, and I see them hand in hand, the map and that, that's why I'm.
Yeah, the map should be a reflection of the language in the zoning bylaw, so.
Yeah, and then you had also talked about, Doug, you had also talked about, like, in the table of uses, just having thing, like, maybe instead of just adding more and more uses, changing the way that things are described in terms of their impact and their sort of role, rather than just adding more and more types of businesses and.
Yeah, as people invent new business models, they keep chasing.
Yeah, like, for example, someone's like, we don't have, dog kennel isn't listed in.
We had dog kennel.
We had dog kettle, we didn't have doggy daycare.
Big problem.
So it's like, where does that fit in?
We were handcuffed.
Right, right, so there's like things like that pop up in our, like, we didn't have tattoo parlor. Where does that fit in?
Cat cafe.
Hey, come on. Now we got another line in the table of uses, cat cafes.
Making a motion.
In the, in the RA, but not in the light industrial. Sorry, no cats in the light industrial.
They're going to get in the way.
They're going to get in the way.
Will not work. Will not perform industrial labor, no matter how much you try.
It's tough to wrangle those cats.
Like pushing rope, yeah, exactly.
No thumbs. Okay, all right, so, I mean, these are just all things that we talked about that you happened to bring up, and we're like, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And there's still a bunch of stuff that we haven't even touched, but I feel like that's enough conversation for tonight, unless someone else feels passionate about one of these other items that are in this.
I know I came in late, and I'm already an hour in it, so let's keep going.
Fair. And I think the things that we're focusing on are really the ones that we have, like, we can just do mostly on our own, as opposed to like, a lot of these other things you need to work with other, other committees and boards on, so.
Right, totally.
Okay, now, the last item on the agenda is related to our budget. This is something that the chair is responsible for putting in a budget request every year. They asked, our deadline is the end of the month. In general, we, it is requested to level fund, and if you are asking for additional funds to really make your case, you have a meeting with, joint meeting with the finance and select board to talk about your request. And then they decide whether to approve or deny the request. Some, a couple of things that we asked for more money last year was legal notices, because the cost in that, because that has gone up. And if we have any sort of thing that needs to get on the warrant, town meeting warrant, we have to pay for that, as opposed to special permit application, the applicant pays for that, so that's why we put up the request there. And then there was an up request to increase the hours of the assistant town planner from five hours per week to now, we are operating 13 hours per week, but that funding is also with CPC funds.
Backing up, you said you wanted to see an increase in the legal notices?
Yeah, but I noticed.
It looks like it's a decrease, yeah.
I know, but I think, I don't know why.
It's a negative increase.
It's a negative increase, yes.
Yes, yes. That might have just been a, a tape, put incorrectly in the table. Because that was something that was added at the last minute, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
Business travel, I mean, off the smart board postage push, legal notices. That's how much has been spent. That's the, that's spent to date, 667.
So they got transcribed.
They got transcribed. So if you're spending 667 by the end of November, five months into the year.
I don't know.
Why did we spend $667 so far this year?
We did, it says credit, 667.
Oh, I'm sorry, 667.
So I think that was just the 660, I think maybe, for whatever reason, why, that's a very bizarre number to have it be 667.
What would you recommend for FBO25?
I would need, well, I think it would be, we would need to ask, see how much like the most recent special permit application was, and like, we're going to have two, potentially two warrant, whatever it costs for two to three public hearing notices.
Okay.
Would be my guess. Unless, and another tactic is to do them all at once and have like, we're having a public hearing on these three things that are going to be warrant articles that saves you the money, so.
And all posted at once.
Yeah, but you need to also be very organized in doing that.
In, in the past, in Hatfield, when posting a change, a notice for a public hearing for a zoning bylaw change, has it been practiced in the hearing notice in the paper to print the entirety of the change?
No, it would say references to Town Hall.
Description of what's to be done and.
Like a sentence-long description that's happening, and that you can go to Town Hall to read the full thing.
I mean, if you're looking for a rough number, I would increase that to 1,200. The last time I bought an ad for the Gazette, a legal ad, it was a pretty good size, and it was almost 400 bucks. Yeah.
Yeah, and then you print, is that, was it being printed twice?
Yes, it was. It was something, I think it was about three column inches, and it was.
Yeah, and then there was one time we messed up. Like, the app, so in order for the applicant to not have to pay again, we paid, so that 1,200 would be a good buffer, I think.
And another question, does the accounting team at town require a finance committee action to move money, say, from professional development to the advertising and legal notices? Are those considered separate lines?
It's, we can move money around within certain things, yes. I don't know the specificity of that. Basically, I asked Lori, and Lori checks and says, yep, we can do that. So, because I know in the past, like, we could move money around, like, we have, like COVID, for example, we kept the professional development, but nobody was going to conferences. And we needed to use that money for legal ads, so we did, or something, you know.
No, fair enough, fair enough. If there's that flexibility, then I think the 1,200 makes sense, as long as you can draw from other lines, if you absolutely have to. You can always get a reserve fund transfer if you overs.
And like, our budget, like, the bulk of our budget is for our assistant town planner. Like, we don't, we don't ask for a lot. And like I said, I know the conference that, like, if that one that was going to happen this weekend was going to happen, it was $50 per person. It's going to be $100 per person for the one in Worcester in March.
Worth every dime. If you haven't been, it's worth every dime.
So, but that means like, two and a half people could go to that, or two people could go to that, plus another like webinar or something like that, so. But I'm inclined to keep everything else the same. And unless we, you know, want to talk about increasing hours for assistant town planner, which supports us and the Conservation Commission, which also do they, but all of your funds come from our department, so that's something. Right, I'm pretty sure.
Really?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I think so.
Well, I don't have a title for them either, like, I'm not.
Right, but I'm sure, but the money comes from our account, not from.
Just start blowing them off, that's.
Yeah, unbelievable.
As long as you're prioritizing us, then, I'm just kidding, yeah.
You know where your bread gets buttered, right?
I heard word they were going to be having the same conversation next week, but I don't, that's all I know.
Okay, so maybe I could talk to the chair about that.
Also, I'm, I'm a little confused still by the CPC, like, did they contribute funds, or did they just? or did they just mean to contribute funds and they didn't? I heard something that was about this, where they maybe.
I agree, yes, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, something was.
They voted to do it, I believe.
They did vote to do it, but then I don't know if it all came out of the planning budget this year.
You mean last year?
Yeah. Like I don't actually know if they did fund me this year or not, anyway. There are another source, maybe.
I can check in that.
Okay. Because we want to make sure that like all of those things align.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It makes so much sense.
Realistically, is there too much work, I was, too much work for you to do in the hours that you have? Or how do you?
I think if we're gonna be adding, um, like an implementation plan for the comprehensive plan, it definitely would be, a few more hours would help.
And that would be the reasoning, right? It's like, okay, now we have this, well, the reasoning why we asked for this began was like, we need to update our comprehensive plan and this person will be helping.
We need to update our comprehensive plan, we need to update our housing plan, we need to look at, we need to look at 40R zoning, we're looking at, you know, major zoning examination over the next three to five years. And all of that takes time and work.
And also like another angle of this that is not in our purview, but something that a town administrator might think about, is if this, this position also worked on grants, then they would pay for themselves, right, in a way.
Would help a little bit.
You know, totally, yeah, we get, it would justify the cost because they would also, this person would also be bringing money in, because right now it's like the town administrator does some of the grant work that, you know, like there's a lot of, each person does what they can, but if we had someone that's like half of their job was to focus on grant stuff or whatever.
Research and application and management is huge.
Is huge, right, I think, because when we were going back and making the initial requests, it took us like two or three years to request funding for assist, a part-time, very part-time assistant planner for us to finally get it, which is understandable and great. But the last year, I was working with the chair of the Deerfield Planning Board at the time because they were also requesting funds for a planner. And we reached out to all the area communities to see like who's funding for planners, who's not, and it was super interesting, like Irving has a full-time planner, a part-time planner, and a graduate student, like.
Wow.
Like, right, like, right, why? Right, and like Orange has similarly has, we were surprised to find, so we did all this research and found there were some towns that are doing, like really prioritizing this, and one of the towns said like, yeah, and half their job is writing grants, and two, two towns, I don't remember which ones, were like, yep, and this person does grants, and they're great, and, there we go. And Watley, it's like an assistant town administrator who does this, but focuses primarily with, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I think like in the, in the comprehensive plan, I recommend so much like for boards to collaborate more, I mean, everything in here that's listed as either stuff that we're supposed to lead with other boards to support, it's like, I think it could play a really cool role, kind of going between like talking to the Open Space Committee more and like talk, like figuring out what parcels to prioritize for maybe acquisition with Conservation Commission and like doing all these things that are recommended as shared. If there's nobody acting as a go-between, it could be a cool opportunity.
Because right now there is, there isn't that, and that was something that was highlighted being part of the comprehensive plan committee, like, we're like, oh, you guys care about that, like, oh, open space, you want to do that, like.
It isn't even duplicating work or like applying for, you know.
Or like you're missing complete pieces of the puzzle in conversations. Like we would bring an angle to something, and open space would bring an angle to something that we didn't realize we were on the same page on, so. And as part of the interview process for the, all the, a lot of the questions that the select board had for the future town administrator was about communication, 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 so.
Yeah, yeah. I think there's a lot that could be done there.
So, yes, I guess I will, my next step would then be to talk to Conservation Chair about what their budget request may be, and probably with you, Andrew, about budget requests and seeing if, how the CPA money has come into play or not.
Yeah, exactly. I think Steve was also confused about that, maybe.
And I also like, we've been taking an incremental approach, which I also think is like the right approach for budget reasons, obviously, but, um, yeah, so we'll see. Yeah, we also gotta like, gotta request more, and then, yeah.
Settle for what we get.
Right.
So the bottom line of this request is.
Yep.
FY '24, the appropriation was 19121 as approved. And for FY '25, you're proposing 23806, but that's probably gonna go up because of that weird error in the pub advertising budget.
So this is what was, this is what was requested and approved last year.
The 23806?
Yes, that was the request last, this is what was requested last year.
Why does that say?
This is fiscal year '26 that we're gonna be requesting funds for.
Oh, hell, you're right.
It's very.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So.
So I'm just, basically what I wanted to get your all, those thoughts on what we, where we would increase or stay the same, and it sounds like we would increase legal ads.
Yes.
And I'm gonna have a conversation about what we, what the request should be to potentially increase assistant town planners' hours.
The 179 was for, did you say 13 hours? At whatever the rate is, you know, we'll leave that alone, but it was for 13 hours.
That money might also be for, oh no, the stipends aren't.
With the possibility of three more hours from CPC, perhaps, and three more hours from Conservation, bringing it up to 19, still remains a non-benefit position, but at least you're here a couple days a week.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And soft, softly start to tiptoe around the idea of creating a grant role for that position as well at some point in the future. Maybe not FY '26, but maybe.
Right, if that's the vision of, yeah, the select board and the town administrator around that, for sure.
Okay.
Yep, great, sounds good. Sounds good, thanks for that conversation. Any other business, otherwise?
I make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
Alrighty.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned at 7:21, our next scheduled meeting is January 8th, which is the second Wednesday of the month with the first being the first.
With the first being the first.
Thanks for coming, nice meeting.
Happy to be here.
Yeah.